Yes, Mayor. Board of Commissioners Public Meeting Tuesday, October 20, 2015. The time is now 7:41. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, notice of this meeting was published in the December 11, 2014, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Star Ledger, and the Herald News. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on Phylum Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Here.
Mayor Petracco?
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Thank you. You want to do communications quickly?
Sure. The Friends of Phoenix Center Foundation, Inc., has submitted an application for a social affair permit to host National Thanks For Giving Tuesday for December 1, 2015, between the hours of 6:00 PM and 9:00 PM. I need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
The Friends of Nutley Public Library has submitted an application for a social affair permit to host the Nutley Hall of Fame induction on Sunday, November 15, 2015, between the hours of 2:00 PM and 5:00 PM.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Holy Family Church has submitted a Sunday letter to host their monthly Off-Prism 50-50, the last Sunday of every month in 2016.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
The Friends of Nutley Singers has submitted a Sunday letter to host their Off-Prism 50-50 Cash Raffle on Sunday, March 13, 2016, at 3:00 PM at 300 Franklin Avenue.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
And that's it for communications, Mayor.
Thank you. We are going to move right to our proclamations for Eagle Scouts. First of all, I want to thank you guys for coming early and waiting for us while we were in the back. All Eagle Scouts are usually very patient, as we see tonight, and respectful. Thank you for that. So, our first-
Mayor should probably give them another badge.
We should probably give them another badge for waiting. Yeah. Commissioner Rogers, we're going to put you in charge of that, okay? Our first proclamation is for Chad Lane Morris. Where's Chad? Come up to the podium. I'm going to read your proclamation with you standing up here. Whereas Chad Lane Morrison is a member of Boy Scout Troop 142 sponsored by Vincent Methodist Church in Nutley, and whereas Chad is the son of Lisa McAdams and brother Joel and Sonia. And whereas Chad has worked diligently through the years of scouting and has achieved 35 merit badges. And whereas Chad's Eagle Scout project consisted of renovation of the Bell Tower Room at the Grace Church in Nutley, and whereas the renovation included the spackling, sanding, and painting of the room, as well as having a new rug and ceiling fan installed, and now provides a room for meetings and Bible studies. And now therefore it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Chad Morrison be commended and recognized for his outstanding completion of his Eagle Scout service project and for providing the Township of Nutley with a sense of true pride. Congratulations, Chad. Would you-
Thank you.
Chad, before you go, would you like to say a few words to the Commissioners?
I would like to say thank you. It's an honor to be here. It's an honor to have achieved the rank of scout. And I'm just very happy that I stuck with it.
Thank you so much, Chad. You did a great job. And we're going to give you guys a plaque. We'll call yous all up together when we're done with the last one. Thank you. Whereas David John Petrella is a member of the Boy Scout Troop 142 sponsored by Vincent Methodist Church in Nutley, and whereas David is the son of John and Mary and brother to Laura and Amy, and whereas David has worked diligently through the years of scouting and has achieved 35 merit badges, and whereas David's Eagle Scout project consisted of renovation of a local safe house, and whereas a renovation included the painting of offices and rooms within the building that is used to provide shelter to battered women and children, and now therefore it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that David Petrella be commended and recognized for his outstanding completion of his Eagle Scout service project and for providing the Township of Nutley with a real sense of pride. David, congratulations. David, would you like to say a couple words?
I just want to say thank you for the honor.
Thank you, David. That's great. Is it Jason William Myrie?
Mear.
Mear? Okay. Whereas Jason William Mear is a member of the Boy Scout Troop 142 sponsored by Vincent Methodist Church in Nutley, whereas Jason is the son of Brian and Kathleen and brother to Jamie, and whereas Jason has worked diligently through the years of scouting and has achieved 24 merit badges, and whereas Jason's Eagle Scout project consisted of renovation of the care kitchen room at the Vincent Methodist Church in Nutley, and whereas the renovation included the replacement of ceiling tiles and installation of new light fixtures in the room that is used to provide meals for those who are less fortunate, now therefore it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Jason Mear be commended and recognized for his outstanding completion of his Eagle Scout service project and for providing the Township with a real sense of pride. Let's hear it for Jason. Mr. Mear, would you like to say a few words tonight?
I'd just like to thank you for recognizing me tonight, and it's an honor to be here.
Thank you, Jason. We're going to gather everybody and take a few pictures. I'd just like to say that what a really fine job these kids do all over town, and I know firsthand that it's not easy to be an Eagle Scout and all the commitment that it takes, and I know that it's not easy for the parents as well. So, let's give the parents a round of applause. Commissioner Scarpelli, would you like to add to that?
I'd just say congratulations to all three of you. It's a lot of dedication that you put in for the good of the community, and we're all very proud of you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rogers?
Well, yes, we are all very proud of you, and as I said to some of you some time ago that you're what this country is all about, and it's because of what you're doing, dedication and commitment that you have to the work that you're doing in this country. Good shape. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans?
Gentlemen, Chad, David, Jason, becoming an Eagle Scout is always about leadership, grounded in strong family and personal values. Please take that into adulthood and wherever you go. Recognize you've joined in a very elite group. The statistics around Eagle Scouts are very slim. Make that transition. It's also recognized as a differentiator on your college application. Set yourself on a new course, embrace it, and enjoy the ride.
Thank you. Commissioner Tucci?
I hate going last because they say all the good things, and then I have about this much to say. But all kidding aside, but I'm used to it by now. You're right. Let me first congratulate you, along with everyone else. We know how hard it is to achieve this designation of Eagle Scout. We know about the hard work that goes into it, and we know how dedicated you need to be to achieve this. We also know that you need a lot of support from your parents and your families to do this. So, to all of you, congratulations, and thank you for all that you've done for our community.
Thank you, Commissioners. Let's take a picture, boys. Come on up with your families. If you guys do not want to stay for our regular business portion of the meeting, now would be the time to vacate. You're more than welcome to stay, however. We never get any takers today. It's unbelievable. Everybody just says goodbye, but that's fine. Guys, thanks for coming again. Did a wonderful job. Commissioners, as they're exiting, I see that we have some reports. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, Mayor. I have a sheetroot report for August and September of 2015.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans?
Yes, I have two. One is I have a code enforcement report for the third quarter of 2015, and also, just for on the record, we're submitting our best practices application response to the state. I'm pleased to report that we have exceeded the minimum requirement once again, which ensures that Nutley receives full 100% of state aid each year. Pleased to submit that.
Yeah, and that's not taken lightly. That's a great job, and we appreciate everyone's effort. Commissioner Evans, thanks for leading the charge on that. That state aid is very important to all of us here that live in town. So, thank you for that. At that point, we will move on to bills. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Public Affairs, $106,962. Revenue and Finance, $3,228,666.38. Public Safety, $88,218.88. Public Works, $335,192. Parks and Public Property, $87,862.54. Total Payroll, $785,912.24. For a grand total of $4,632,623.96.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Okay, this next ordinance, I'll read on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. This is an introduction, an ordinance of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, authorizing the acquisition of land known as 307-309 Franklin Avenue, and also known as Block 6001, Lot Number 10, pursuant to the Franklin Avenue and- Oh, I'm sorry. Pursuant to the local land and buildings law. I move that this ordinance be passed to second reading and advertised in the Nutley Sun, together with the notice required by law, the further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners to be held at its second reading on, is that November 17, 2015?
Yes, Mayor.
November 17, 2015. I move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans, I hear you have a public hearing this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I have a public hearing. It's a simple matter of reclassification of a line item on our capital budget as it relates to repaving of East Center Street. The amount is $125,000, and it remains the same.
Thank you. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to comment on ordinance number 3324? Seeing no one, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye, thank you.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. We'll move on to resolutions. Commissioner Rogers?
Yes, Commissioners, we have some of the greatest nurses in the world right here in Nutley, and we're going to honor one this evening. Whereas Catherine Flannery, RNCSN Yanacole School Nurse, received the Food Allergy Hero Award at the Community Food Allergy Conference at the Saddle Brook Marriott on September 30, 2015. Whereas Kathy has made outstanding contributions in promotion of health and well-being of students and staff in the Township of Nutley, New Jersey. Whereas Kathy has provided a leadership role in the Nutley Food Allergy Support Group, an organization sponsored by the Department of Public Affairs, created to assist parents with food allergic children by supplying information and resources. And whereas Kathy is a CPR instructor with the American Red Cross, has been instrumental in helping to get many principals, school staff, and school nurses certified in CPR, acknowledging the importance of teaching CPR in schools and having emergency action plans in place. Whereas school nurses play a significant role in keeping our students safe and are an essential arm of public health promoting wellness and protecting students, Kathy has dedicated her time and efforts in the promotion of health education to students, families, and staff. Now therefore it be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, along with the Department of Public Affairs and the Nutley Food Allergy Support Group, congratulate Kathleen Flannery, RNCSN, as a public health leader promoting health and well-being by collaborating with school staff, parents, and community members to keep students safe and healthy at school and at home. Now Kathy, before I cast a vote, so my colleagues cast a vote, I'd like you to come forward, and I'd like Peggy, you come forward, and there's a reason why we have Peggy coming forward, too. To hold you up, first of all. First, I'm going to cast my vote yes, and I'm going to ask my colleagues, who are a big part of this, to say a few words. I vote yes. I move it. I'm sorry. Move the resolution.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Okay. What I'd like to say, Kathy, is, you know, you've done a great job. You really have. And I've got Peggy there. I didn't expect you to be here, Peggy, but you know me, when I have the opportunity to say something, I'm going to say it. Peggy has been with us many, many years, and she left us. You know, she went to Green of Pastures in Montclair. But you know what? She physically left Nutley, but every time we call her, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, she's back down at the Nutley Health Department, helping us with a lot of things that we need to get done in Nutley. So, you know what? Thank you. Thank you for being a good mentor to nurses. Thank you for the job you're doing. And Kathy, this food allergy program you put together, I know has helped a lot of people, especially a lot of parents who are concerned about their children, as to what to eat, what not to eat, younger kids. You've done a great job, and I thank you very much. And pass it off to my colleague.
Just congratulations, Kathy, on all your good work. Food allergy is a big concern for many parents and children, and a growing concern. So, thank you for your support group and all the help you have in providing it.
Evans?
You know, it's, as Steve was reading, I suffer with a mushroom allergy. I'm constantly going, is there mushrooms in here? Is anything in here? And I think about the times when the answer should have been yes, and I shouldn't have, and I had to deal with that. So, anything that you can do to promote greater awareness of allergies, especially peanut allergies and things like that, it's so dangerous. Anything you can do that to help.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes. Kathy, congratulations. It's well deserved as a father and a grandfather. I know how important this is, and I know how people need to be sensitized to different types of allergies and what the results can be if someone in fact eats something that does not agree with them. So, for all your hard work, and Peggy, for all your support, whether near or far, thank you both, and congratulations.
I'd just like to add to that, too, Kathy and Peggy. I have to tell you, many years ago, I was blessed with my grandmother Petracco making it to 94 years old, but she wound up being in acute care. And I have to tell you, that's when I finally really found out what life is all about and what nurses do, because to change bedpans and kids at school who's vomiting and, you know, be their mother and father when, you know, everyone's working and stuff like that. Nurses definitely do not get enough credit, in my book, and, you know, you guys do everything from the mental stuff to the allergies, and God bless you, Peggy, all the nurses, because you really are underrated, and you do a fantastic job. So, Commissioner Rogers, thank you so much for bringing this to our attention.
Why don't you come up with your family so we could take that picture?
Does Peggy, maybe she wants to say-
Kathy, would you like- Kathy, you want to say a few words?
Would you like to say a few words? Kathy, would you like to say anything?
I just would be remiss if I didn't thank Peggy Burdaski and Barbara Colari, part of the Nutley Food Allergy Network, and also all the staff and parents and teachers at school, and even the town with all their support. I wouldn't, it makes my job easier, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's take a picture. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Evans telling jokes this evening, very funny. All right. Whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property has determined that there's a need to renovate the deteriorating facade at the facility at 44 Park Avenue, and whereas the Parks and Public Property Department has determined that the cost of the renovation received on October 7, 2015, and the original bid exceeds the amount of the project, and whereas NJSA 40A:11-13.2 permits the rejection of all bids under such circumstances, and whereas the Parks Department will go for rebid on said project, and whereas specifications are available in the Purchasing Department Township Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, now therefore it be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the township clerk be, and she is hereby authorized, to advertise for sealed bids for renovations at the facade at 44 Park Avenue. Specifications are available in the Purchasing Department Township Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey. Bids to be received on Thursday, November 12, 2015, at 3:00 PM prevailing time, in the Commission Chambers, 3rd Floor Township Hall, Kennedy Drive, at which time they will be publicly opened and read. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the treasurer be, and she is hereby authorized, to refund overpayments of tax charges for Block 1400-1-C1104 for $441.30, for Block 1701-17 for $278.83, and Block 5801-Law 30 for $3,270.26, for a total amount of $3,998.39. So, move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, State of New Jersey, that the treasurer be, and she is hereby authorized, to cancel water charges in the amount of $48,478.85, and refund overpayments of water charges in the amount of $3,571.97 for the following. Block 502-Lot 13 for canceling charges of $30,853.86, and a refund of $1,722.16 for Block 900-1-C4015, canceling charges for $1,092.97, and a refund for $1,092.82. Block 7601-Law 3, canceling charges for $1,044.38, and refunding $756.99. For Block 3100-21, canceling charges for $8,580.80, no refund, and for Block 1000-1-C5099, canceling charges for $6,986.84, and no refund. So, move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Whereas there exists a need to acquire services for the support and maintenance of the township website, recreation software, and for the emergency alert notification system as a non-fair and open contract to pursue its provisions, NJSA 19:44A-20.4 and 20.5. Whereas it has been determined and certified in writing that the value of the acquisition will exceed $17,500, and whereas the anticipated term of the contract is one year. Whereas NJSA 40A:11-5ID provides for the award of a contract without public bidding for the provision or performance of goods or services for the support or maintenance of computer hardware and software. Whereas GovInteract has patented computer software currently being used in connection with the website and provides email and technology services. Whereas GovInteract, Inc., has submitted a proposal to provide services for $24,000 annually. And whereas GovInteract has completed and submitted a Business Entity Disclosure Certification, which certifies that it has not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that the contract shall prohibit them from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. And whereas the contract is in an amount not to exceed $24,000 per year, and funds are available in current account numbers, 501-110-200, 501-220-200, 501-308-200, 501-314-200, 501-408-200, 501-506-200, in the amount of $4,000 from each account, as evidenced by the Chief Financial Officer's certification. And now therefore it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, as follows. The mayor and clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute an agreement with GovInteract for 2015. This contract is awarded without competitive bidding in accordance with NJSA 40A:11-51D of the Local Public Contracts Law. The Business Entity Disclosure Certification and Determination of Value shall be placed on file, and a copy of this resolution, as well as the contract shall be placed on file with the clerk, and a notice of this action shall be printed once and then Nutley Sun some-
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
Just as a reminder on this particular resolution, once we launch the new website this fall, this charge will no longer be necessary.
Thank you, Commissioner. All you have this evening?
All I have, thank you.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Whereas the Township of Nutley has determined that the property described on Schedule A, attached hereto and incorporated herein, is no longer needed for public use- is no longer needed for public use, and whereas the Local Unit Technology Pilot Program and Study Act, Public Law 2001, Chapter 30, authorizes the sale of surplus personal property no longer needed for public use through the use of an online auction service. Whereas Township of Nutley intends to utilize the online auction services of propertyroom.com, whereas the sale are being conducted pursuant to Division of Local Government Services Local Finance Notice 2008-9, 2008-21R. Now therefore it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that the Township hereby authorized to sell the surplus personal property as indicated in Schedule A at an online auction website entitled propertyroom.com, and two, the terms and conditions of the agreement entered into between propertyroom.com and the Township of Nutley are available at propertyroom.com and in the Township Clerk's office, and three, a certified copy of the within resolution be forwarded by the Township Clerk to the following Division of Local Government Services Chief Police and Chief Financial Officer. Schedule A attached to Ford E350, 2006, and a GMC 3500 HD, 2001, resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
What do I have, Mayor?
Thank you. Whereas the Township of Nutley has entered into a contract with Ingleseema Webster, Wascala, and Taylor, 600 Parsippany Road, Parsippany, New Jersey, 07054, as redevelopment council for the road to repurposing in the year 2015, and original contract amount not to exceed $120,000, and whereas change order number one has been authorized for original contract amount to be increased by $75,000 in 2015, whereas the funds are available from 5-01-226-205 and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer said certification attached to this resolution. Now therefore it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that the change order number one has attached this change from contract previously made by the Township of Nutley with Ingleseema Webster. Am I saying that correct, council?
Wascala.
A tough one. Wascala, okay, and Taylor, for services are hereby authorized and approved. I move the resolution. Second.
Mayor, stop for one moment.
Sure.
Paragraph two, not to exceed $75,000.
Okay, so that's a not to exceed $75,000, just for the... Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I move the resolution?
Second and again.
Thank you. Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye, thank you. Whereas raffle applications have been received from the following organizations, Friends of Nutley Singers, license number 42-15, off-premise 50/50 cash raffle, Sunday, March 13, 2016; Rotary Club of Nutley, license number 43-15, off-premise merchandise raffle, Saturday, December 5, 2015; Friends of the Phoenix Foundation, Inc., license number 44-15, off-premise 50/50 cash raffle, Tuesday, December 1, 2015; Holy Family Catholic Church, license number 45-15, off-premise 50/50 cash raffle, last Sunday of every month in the year 2016. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk and the police department, now therefore it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley, County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are approved, and the municipal clerk is authorized to issue the licenses. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye. Whereas sealed bids for delivering towing services for the Township of Nutley were publicly opened and read on October 7, 2015, and whereas Nicoletti Auto Body Works, Inc. is the lowest bidder, now therefore it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that a contract for the delivering towing services to the Nutley Police Department and Township of Nutley is hereby awarded to Nicoletti Auto Body Works, Inc., 177 Paseka, Belleville, New Jersey, 07109. Be it further resolved that the Township Clerk be, and she is hereby authorized to enter into a said contract for a two-year period on behalf of the Township of Nutley. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye.
That concludes our business portion of the meeting. If there's anyone here that would like to address the Board of Commissioners, feel free to approach the podium.
Mayor, before we get to Mad Rush, I just have one public service announcement this evening. I just want to remind everyone of our Franklin Fall Festival on Friday night, the 23rd, from 6 to 10. We're going to have live music featuring the Infernos, the four-man trio, Ray Suttrell. We have outdoor dining. We have events for children. We have a video game trailer, face painting, an airbrush artist, gourmet crepes, zapples, and inflatable toys for children to play on. So everyone, please come out and support this. It's going to be a great night. The weather is cooperating, and I just, once again, would like to thank all of the Commissioners for all their help and all of their input. This is going to be truly another great Nutley event.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Also, I have a reminder that our general election for our Board of Ed and other elections is November 3, so please go out and vote. Make a difference in our township. We need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, Mayor. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Petracco?
Aye, thank you.
And the time is now 8:17.
Let's go Mets.